Okay, next is to ascertain forum and conflict interest. So we need to have a, we have three of our five members, so we did have a forum. So, um, next is approval of previous meeting minutes. Y'all have a chance to look over them?
Yes. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, Charles?
Uh.
Three ayes, zero nays? And there were no special meeting minutes, that's good. Okay. Um, approval of expenditures, review of financial status. Have y'all had a chance to look over that?
Yes.
I make most of the great things there.
Okay, Charles makes a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Brooke has a second, okay, Charles?
Aye.
And, um, same for review of budget report.
Yes.
Make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the budget report.
I'll say.
All right, Charles?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, presentation regarding police slash dog incident occurrence on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. So, here we go. Okay, I know many of you have heightened emotional state concerning this incident. This is the statement that so many of you have been asking for over the last ten days. I have to talk about my faith here at the beginning because it informs every decision I make. I'm commanded by my God to treat others as the image bearer of Him. Even if you're an atheist or of a different religion, this applies. My goal is to stay factual and accurate. Any comments to state of mind have been verified with the person mentioned. Please refrain from interrupting with comments. The public comments section immediately follows this statement. I ask that all of us treat each other with dignity and respect. I'm not implying that any or all of you cannot be critical of this body or the police department that serves this community. That is your First Amendment right. I am only asking that we be civil to each other. So, on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Chief Medina responded to a call concerning an aggressive animal. It is true that Steve Medina, Chief, was on administrative duty. That's why he was at his desk with only his uniform and sidearm on. He had no intention of answering calls, but he was the only one on duty and it would have taken much longer for any other agency to respond. Chief Medina arrives on the scene and makes contact with the complainant and walks towards the home of the dogs in question. The dogs then alert to Chief's presence and stop what they are doing, which we'll get to in a minute, and move towards the fence. As the dogs move towards the fence and lunge at it, Chief, he draws his sidearm and fires one shot. This deters the dogs from further aggression. Chief then makes contact with the homeowner to tell them what happened. He tells the homeowner the city will pay for the vet bill for the dog that was shot. As a goodwill gesture, we will honor that. This is a rough outline of the events on the day of the incident. So here is some of the recent history of the dogs at this address. Some of the images in this part of the statement are graphic. If you are sensitive to disfigured or dismembered animals or of dog attacks, you may want to step outside for this part. So, on January tenth, twenty twenty-five, Officer Stringfield responded to an animal attack concerning the same dogs in question. These dogs attacked a neighbor's goat. Here are the pictures taken during that investigation. Okay. Uh, then, on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, Officer Oliviera, I murdered that, honey, I'm sorry. Responded to a call where the same dogs had eviscerated a cat. The homeowners did claim that this cat was roadkill, but as you can see in from the pictures I'm about to show, at the very least, this incident took place outside of the fence that was supposed to contain the dogs. During the call, Officer Oliviera, I'm sorry, I should've just gone and called you, I'm sorry. Witness one of the owners of the dogs command the dog back in the fence. The dog then jumped over the fence into the yard. The dog again jumped out of the fence and the same owner commanded the dog get back in the fence. So on that call, these were pictures that were obtained. That is the fence in the background. That is part of the cat. So now, on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Chief responds to another animal attack in progress by these dogs. This is the third attack in five weeks. Here's a video provided by the complainant. This is in the backyard of the dogs in question. My understanding is that all the dogs in this video belong to the homeowners in questions. And this is what Chief walked up to. Chief arrived at the scene knowing the history of these animals and was unwilling to put his safety at risk with only offense that these dogs have repeatedly defeated as a barrier. That, in conjunction with the viciousness of the attack he witnessed, compelled him to use his sidearm in self-defense. The dog with the penetrating gunshot wound had an injury wound to its chest indicating the dog was jumping up. The second dog taken to the vet was a victim of the brutal attack we all just witnessed. Chief Medina fired only one time. He's been on the job for thirty years, fifteen of those here in Brownthor, and this is the only time he has ever fired on a dog. So now, I would like to reiterate why I didn't make a more detailed statement earlier. The only thing more important than a quick result is a result that everyone can trust. I needed time to gather information and to make an informed statement. So, now, let's get to, um, quickly, some of the Facebook comments of things that have, I personally and us as a city have been accused of. Uh, accusations of sweeping it under the rug. Last week, I formally asked Harrison County Sheriff's Office to investigate the incident. As I expected, they had already started an independent investigation. I informed them that the city would cooperate fully and provide them with anything they need for the investigation. So, the video of Chief. Some folks seem to think that the video of Chief apologizing for shooting the dog is damning. Of course, he apologized. He didn't want to shoot anyone's dog. Additionally, this was mere minutes after the incident took place and Chief was still processing what had happened. A lot of Facebook claims that the dog was chained up. As you can see from this video, none of the dogs were chained. Chief left the dog to die and suffer. Um, Chief immediately informed the owner of the dog that he had shot it and that they needed to take it to the vet. He did not just leave the dog to suffer. Now, uh, with me, against me personally, meeting with me before getting on the agenda. In situations that a private meeting with me before you can be placed on the agenda is somehow a bad thing, I don't understand. There are threefold reasons for this. One, I want to see if it's something that I can fix sooner than the next meeting. Not everything needs a council vote, so there is a chance that I can expediate the process. Two, I want to make sure that it is something that we can vote or take action on. If you just want to tell us what a terrible job we're doing, that is something you can use the public comments section of the meeting for. Three, if it is something that needs to be on the agenda, the private meeting gives me time to formulate a plan to explain to council how we would accomplish the goal. I would think that the citizens would be happy that the mayor of their city wants to meet with them to try to help them with the problem. I understand that our community wanted answers, but I owe it to all of you to have a thoughtful and informed response. So, before I open public comments, let's talk briefly about going forward. Chief Medina will be using his last few weeks before retirement to focus on getting our new chief, Scott Minty, up to speed and prepared for his new role. Also, I will be working with our new chief to update our policies and procedures on how to respond to animal attack calls. Additionally, we will strengthen our policies on wearing body cameras going forward. Lastly, I would like to remind everyone that the purpose of a city council meeting is to conduct the business of the city. I ask that everyone remain calm and refrain from disruptive behavior. I assume that some of you won't do this. Just know, I see that for what it is and I think most others will see it also. An attempt to cause more trouble instead of trying to help resolve the situation. Also, before the public comments section starts, the matter with Chief Medina is still under investigation, with him being the focus of that investigation, so he will not be responding to any questions or comments tonight. So, now, we are to the public comments section. Thank you. Sure.
Georgia.
Um, so hi, my name is Georgia Aaron. I'm affiliated with Wildlife Rescue Rehab Organization. I send a text message via Facebook Messenger to every single council member and the mayor who are inquiring what was going to be done about the dog that was shot by the chief. The mayor and three council members did respond respectfully to me. Glenn Vess did not. He called my employer and yelled at them on the phone and said fire me immediately. This was followed up with email communications between Vess and my boss as well. According to TMO, which Brownthor is an active member of, this unacceptable and retaliatory behavior is not anywhere near the scope of responsibility or authority of a municipal council member. As I understand it, this is not the first time Mr. Vess has done something like this to a private citizen, questioning him. So I'm publicly calling on citizens of Brownthor to take actions to have Glenn David Vess removed from Brownthor City Council for repeated gross misconduct, unbecoming of a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wesley Cooper?
I didn't bring no paperwork with me, but, um, you know, I came to address about the dog and obviously Mr. Vess, but let's get started with the dog. Um, you said you had an educated statement on what happened with the dogs and all that. One was struck. Again, I didn't bring paperwork. I'd be more happy to present you with them, but both dogs were struck with a bullet, the vet says. I also know what a gunshot looks like. I carried the black dog, the one that was getting law in the video. I carried her and put her in. That young man's parents struck. Lifeless. I know for a fact she was left there to suffer. My deal, you showed up with no body camera. Okay? Two, yes, it was a complaint, but there were several vehicles in the driveway. They were all home. You didn't go knock on the door. You went in the backyard. Hey, yes, they were fighting. I, again, the video was vicious, I understand that. There's people home. Why not make contact with the dog owners and be like, hey guys, you know, this is what's going on? Instead, you walked beside the house and shot the black dog first. She has an entrance and exit wound, again, all on paperwork. And hit the brindle dog in the chest. He still has a bullet in his shoulder. So no, not one dog got hit, two, by one bullet. Paperwork proves. My deal on it, you showed up with no body camera, made no contact with the homeowners, discharged your gun, and no other agency was on scene to take your statement? Isn't there some kind of law on that? Matter of fact, I know there is, but, you know, let's get beyond that. All of it was handled improperly. A hundred percent. And can't anybody say it wasn't? It was all improperly handled. That's the big deal. That's why I'm here to speak on the owner's behalf, because he don't want to be in the limelight. But I'll do it for him. I'm not happy about it. That black dog that, that I carried, she stays at my house as well. She's not my dog, but she might as well be. She plays with my kids, she plays with my dogs. She eats my food, she lays on my couch. So I'm just as angry as they are. What, my, another thing I'd like to address in my forty seconds is, why hasn't taken you a week? Because I know you reached out to the dog owner, but it took you a week to reach out. Why? Whether you were doing an investigation or not, it's a common courtesy to reach out. Hey, hey man, I'm, I'm sorry for what happened, you know? Try to do the right thing, but it took you over a week, brother. And you reached out and made it seem like he wanted to talk to you. It's the other way around, you should be wanting to talk to him. I mean, that's how I view it. I'm a citizen of this town and I, I'd expect y'all being the authority that y'all are to have a higher standard for yourselves. Because I got it for y'all, why can't y'all hold it for yourselves? That'll be enough.
Thank you.
Medina's yelling?
Can we take the mic up? We can't hear you. We can't hear back here.
We can't hear anything.
There's a microphone.
Please use the microphone.
The microphone doesn't play into the room, that's only for the cameras. We've got a sound system coming, but it wasn't here for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank the council for letting me speak here. I am a precinct rep for the Republican Party. I represent these people, a lot of whom voted for me, and I thank them for that. But I've heard a couple of things tonight that I have issue with. One, that there is evidential fact of two dogs being shot. Yet I hear in testimony that only one dog was shot. That freaks of cover-up, people. That freaks of cover-up. For a city councilman to call someone's boss and have them fired, not only does that freak of cover-up, cover-up, good boy, good old boy network, it also is a violation of USC nineteen eighty-three. Using the color of a political office to intimidate or cause issues for someone, that is a strict federal violation of civil rights. I am on this. I will stay on this. A chief should not have went in there without knocking on that door. For one thing, there are animal control laws. If an animal is considered a vicious animal, there are laws in state to have it declared so and make it where it is financially impossible for a person to keep a dog. They have certain liabilities as a dog owner. That should have been pursued fairly. I will not rest until this has served. I'm not going to make any definite, I'm not going to make any guilt and say something like that. But if the police officer shot the dog improperly, if he made a statement to you that he only shot one, yet two dogs were shot, he would have shot the other one. That's cover-up. That's cover-up. If a councilperson is calling someone's job to try to have them fired, that's a good old boy cover-up. Thank you. Thank you.
Tanny Camden?
Okay, um, I would like to address the council about my street. Uh, Thunderbird Street. When they came in here a few years ago and they redid all the streets, but not Thunderbird. It was never, the potholes were never fixed. When they did Sailor's Street, they left a path of Thunderbird in gravel and dirt. The, um, my, I was going to complain about the potholes because they didn't get fixed, but the potholes are kind of holding the traffic down a little bit. These kids that come out of school and they go to that football field, they will turn that corner on two miles. It says fifteen miles an hour. They're going fifty and sixty. And I have not yet seen anyone pull a kid over because they're speeding. It's not that far off from Sailors to the football field. There's no reason for them to be driving like a maniac. And they're always doing it. I bought a bullhorn and I've been hollering, slow down. And they look at me and punch it. Uh, some will slow down because I scare them. I come out of nowhere. But something needs to be done about the speed on Thunderbird Street. Uh, I've thought about going and making more potholes because you'll take more ground. I have three dogs. I have a backyard that's fenced in. They're in that backyard. Sometimes they run out the door without me knowing. If one of them gets hit because they're driving like a maniac, that's my kid. They're my babies and I don't want anything to happen to them. So something needs to be done about the speed. We were told when we first bought the house, it was on a dead end road. And they took the dead end off whenever they were reconstructing the corner up there. And they said they'd make it dead end again when they got done. Never got done. They finally put a barrier up there to block it off and the schools started throwing a fit about it. And so they took it back down. The buses are the ones that have torn up the road. But nobody wants to fix the road. I don't understand why can't the road get fixed? I mean, I know right in front of the junior high school, there's a lot of potholes. I, I avoid it as much as possible, but I can't avoid my street. Um, it messes with the alignment. But, um, that's, that's my complaint, is the speed on Thunderbird Street. Something needs to be done about it. Thank you. And the bus drivers go on two wheels too, we've seen it.
Regina Holcomb?
Hi, my name is Regina Holcomb. I've lived here for forty-eight years. I'm embarrassed to say at this moment that I live here. And that's sad. I've raised my children here and I raised my grandchildren here. And I have a lot of them. I'm here because of the concern and all the things that have been read. I support you. And I will continue, but I do have a question. Uh, I'm listening to the testimony and I've watched the deal, uh, on the TV. Uh, and I've taken policing. And so, my first question, I have like three. My first question is, any police officer or any human going to the side of someone's home in a personal backyard, any guard dog is going to attack the fence and throw a fit? Any dog, whether it's big or small, is going to react to a stranger coming to the fence? I take care of dogs at a woman's house around the corner from there. And if I, who they know, walk up and they don't know it's me, they throw a fit on the other side of the fence. Any dog is going to protect its property. Nobody should have gone to the side of that house. I don't care who they are. They should have gone to the front door. And the correct protocol, like they said a month ago, thank you very much, Mr. Miller, was not handled appropriately. There are laws and nothing was done like it should have been. Nothing. And this is not the first time that things like this have happened. Didn't result in dogs dying, but inappropriately handling of this type of situation. And enough is enough. I'm not going to be embarrassed to say, I'm from Brownsboro, I've been here forty-eight years. And I'm not going to sit back and be quiet when things are not done according to protocol. So, with me stating I support you, I do have one question. To have eliminated over half, over half of all of this mess that's going on. I know you came into this situation with a lot of other crap going on. So that's another reason I've said back off. Publicly, back off. But if you had stepped up and said, I don't know what's going on, but there's a lot of uproar. I think it would be best for this city and the action that you step away at the moment on administrative leave? And it'd be your choice in the council to give payment during that time or not? That it be handled that way? That is my question for you. Why you didn't?
Robert McAnally? Your turn.
Sir, I, I do support you, okay? I know you've walked into a situation that you don't rightly deserve. And unfortunately, you're the head of the pyramid, so it's probably going to end up on you. But Ivan was on administrative duty, okay? He never should have been on a call. That's what, uh, Harrison County is for. They could have come in, plus knowing the issue with those animals in the past, they could have sent animal control. Anybody who's been trained, whether it's law enforcement or military, they know your firearm is your last line of defense, not your first. You better take lethal action immediately, okay? I've been there. I've been in combat. I'm not shooting a damn dog behind the fence. That's cowardly. And if he's under investigation, why does he have a firearm on his side? He should not. He should be suspended. He shouldn't even be in uniform. If he's trying to ride out till retirement, collect that pension, he should be fired prior to that. And as far as, uh, Vess, him coming at people's jobs, him coming at people directly, is a sad mistake for a member of the council. You guys are the ones we should be looking to to get things taken care of. Not having some little schoolyard bully try and pick on whoever he thinks is weak. That's uncalled for. As far as the Ivan thing that I missed, it is Texas law that he have, he was supposed to have body cam on, it's called dog's law, okay? Most police forces will terminate on the first offense because that is law. How he's able to sit here How he's able to sit here, obviously still on duty, is beyond me. I don't trust Ivan with a firearm right now.
Yeah. Unacceptable.
All right, that concludes the, uh, presentation by citizens. So now we will get to new business. Discuss considering possibly, possibly approved ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three zero one B, in ordinance of the City of Brownsboro, Texas, ordering an election for the purpose of electing two council members and a mayor for two-year terms each, to be held on the third day of May twenty twenty-five, authorizing execution of an election contract for election services, providing the location of the early polling place, providing for notice of elections, providing for repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing for an effective date, and ordering, ordaining date, and, and ordaining other related matters. So, um, I think y'all all got a copy of the election. This is basically just to run our city council slash mayoral, mayoral election in May.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Charles?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Three ayes, no noes, motion carries. Discuss and possibly consider approval of a plat as prepared by King Surveying Company, uh, sign for a new liquor store on Highway thirty-one. So, um, if, if y'all don't already know, this store is going to be on the east side of town, um, between the existing railroad tracks that you can see towards the top of the drawing and the state highway, so, um...
It's just this side of the storage room, this is going out of, out of Brownsboro.
And, um, once liquor stores were passed, this was actually my preference of a place to go, so, I mean, not that that really matters, we're going to approve it as long as there's nothing wrong with it anyway, I think, but I think any traffic that we get from Chammern that keeps it out of downtown, so I'm glad we've got one in this slot. So do we need discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Charles?
Aye.
Okay, that's three ayes and zero noes, motion carries. Discuss considering possibly approved, keep Brownsboro beautiful, adding walking trail at park area using their funds. So, um, I've got a couple of KBB folks here, uh, who's going to speak. The lovely Ms. McLean, thank you so much.
I'm the secretary for KBB currently, and we have discussed during cleanup day to clean up around the creek, um, and then it was brought up by our president that it would be a great idea to create a walking trail around the park, and since it is city-owned and city-maintained, we thought it prudent to get permission to do so. So I ask that you do.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing, since this was put on the agenda, uh, that's...
That's it for me?
If you would like to go say you can, thank you. It's my wife, so maybe tell me. Um, okay, so, um, since this was put on the agenda, um, Facebook comments have said, well, uh, EDC was planning on, um, putting more stuff in the park. So my suggestion to this council is that we approve this with the caveat that they coordinate with EDC to make sure we're putting money towards something that then we're going to bulldoze to put something else there soon. I mean, parks change over time, so I'm not talking about in ten years, I'm talking about in the next year or two. So that would be my suggestion to this council.
I think that our intention also is to all hold hands, the chamber, the EDC, um, KBB, so, um, do you think one of y'all can come to the next EDC meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, um, we can, you know, because I think that, I, I, I think that most of what we've discussed about those plans would be over by the pavilion area, so, um, would this extend all the way down to the creek?
Yes.
Okay, and then what, or just around?
Around.
So that would, are we talking about a dirt trail, or?
Um, the only thing we've discussed right now is some sort of edging with like sand or like a...
Right.
Even just foot path, you know what I mean? But just the edging so that you see where, where to go.
Okay, perfect. Well, then I will make a motion to approve with that caveat.
I am on EDC.
Okay, you make the motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we'll let KBB put in a walking trail with a caveat that they coordinate with EDC.
I know, that's what I'm just saying.
So who's going to say this?
Exactly, I just, I think we need to have more people here, that way it's not a conflict.
Do we, okay?
Well, then table it for next month?
Do we want to table it for next month because we don't have...
And then maybe they'll have time to give the new EDC.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm going to table it until next month. Wait, is that going to miss the...
Um, so the cleanup day is actually March eighth, and so we were just wanting to kind of clean up around the, um, creek, you know, on the, the, cut down brambles and things like that, so as long as we can still do that, then...
And we're looking for lots of help to clean up, so...
Yeah, and I wasn't even sure of that part, I, I think I could have just given permission on that, but, uh, once the EDC thing came in, I was like, we'll, we'll put it to a vote. Um, so I, I, again, for that part, I think I can just give permission, but hey, we're all here, so, um, can we give them permission to clean up at the park?
Absolutely.
Okay, who wants to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that can clean up the park.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion in a second, Charles?
Aye.
Aye.
And would you make a note to put the trail in? Thank you. Okay, yeah, um, item four, Linda Alvin had some things to talk to us about, her capital investment plan, town hall meeting, and block grants, she's one of our council members. Unfortunately, she has the flu, so I, uh, can't speak on that with any intelligence, so, um, if anybody else can't, we're going to table that until next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Don't leave that, don't leave it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Charles?
Aye.
All right, so that is tabled. And, uh, item five, Amber Cooper regarding continued flooding in the front of her house and runoff of the pond burn in the back of their yard.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amber Cooper, and I live on Browning Street, the first house on the right. So here we are, going on four years in May, that somebody decided to take it upon themselves to dig a ditch in front of the vacant lots next to us, that then began flooding our yard and others down from us. Um, three years later, I believe, the city's solution was to build a detention pond behind our house, which has taken some of the water, but, um, the last rain that we just had, maybe about a month ago, um, that's the worst that I've seen it, other than before I put the hay bales four years ago in May in front of my property to prevent the water from entering my property. So my issue now is, there's still water coming down the ditch in front of the lot next to us. So I have the videos that shows how much water, and our property has eroded so much that now, if you're looking at our house, our driveway on the side where the mailbox is, the water's now starting to flow into our front yard again, which we had put up the hay bales to protect. We also have water running off the burn from the detention pond into our backyard. So again, we are getting flooded from all sides. If I were to go out and remove the four-year-old hay bales in front of my house, the water would be to my front step again. So here's my issue. Where am I, if I do my own project, put in a French drain, all this stuff, if I dig a ditch, if I do this, where am I supposed to push the water to?
Um, I'm going to touch on this in old business, but, um, we do still have water coming down the other side of the road, and then crossing the road, and then hitting the bottom of the road, your house, and the houses in that area. We have a plan, actually, our previous mayor had already started a plan to create a, a ditch in the road, like a reverse speed bump, if you will, uh, to funnel that water into the existing, um, to go further up and funnel that water where the rest of the water from that side of the road goes to the detention pond. Does that make sense?
It happens after the detention pond.
I know, it crosses over, so we're trying to get it, we're trying to get it before it gets that far down. So here's the problem with that. We're still going to do that, but first, we have to solve, get, being able to fully stop the water on the egress pipes on the other side, so we're not adding more to this side. So, so what we're waiting on, and I've already got kids for it, just let me tell you my plan, and then tell me if I have a mark, okay? Um, once we get those valves in, so when it's actively raining, we can full stop, just collect water in the pond, including the water coming down the other side of your stream. So we route all that water into the pond, and then, once it stops raining and that water has had time to recede, we can open the valves. The, our current system, gate system, was designed to set at a, where it would, it would slowly drain all the time. That's not going to work for our, for our, for the folks on the other side. So I need a valve that we can fully close without scuba gear, because the one we have now, you would have to go underwater to do it. So, so we're going to have on the egress side, so that you can stay, you know, above water, so then, once it stopped raining and that water is receding, we can open the valve and drain that water so that y'all's property isn't inundated.
The question I have with that, okay, as I showed you before, that line is actually twenty feet back on my property. I've got about, about twelve thousand square feet of my property I cannot use. It's about sixty feet wide by two hundred feet long. I cannot use. Then, then on top of that, I've got the berms on the backside, down behind my barn, uh, it's like five hundred and, no, it's four hundred and seventy linear feet of my property that keeps getting washed out every time. There's nothing I can do with my property right now.
So you're on your, so you're on, you're on month eight?
Yeah.
I'm on year four.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But I'm not finished with what I had to say.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, you asked a question, so I thought it was my turn, I'm terribly sorry, seriously.
No, so the water that crosses the street is right where the Saunders' old white house was. There is still water coming down the ditch before the water crosses the street that is flooding us. So the detention pond is not doing everything it was meant to do in addition, it's flooding them, but, and I'm sympathetic to them, but I've been dealing with this for four years.
Okay, y'all understand that on both sides of the pond, y'all are both saying that the city is responsible for the water, and there's, we're not making new water, right? You, you did, it's coming from the sky, so...
No, we asked for a solution in fixing the drainage issue on our street, which still has not been done. There was a pond, and this isn't your doing, this is some decisions that were made before you, but this detention pond was, the engineer's exact words were, I built, I gave an estimate for what I was told to do, and he said in this meeting, um, a year ago, or whatever it was, that there was no guarantee that it was all going to go as planned, and I understand that. But what I'm saying to you is, there's still water coming down the ditch that the Kellys dug before the water crosses the road from the other side of Browning. I have it on video from this last rain, and it's getting worse.
Um, Amber, I, I understand that you got the problem at your house, but I've also got video from all over town from that same rain, and everyone was flooded because it was a humongous rain. We are trying to fix your problem. I want to route more of the water into the pond, but I cannot do that until we get the valves in. I have estimates right here, four valves, okay? This was coming up in old business.
No, I understand that.
I'm, I'm, we're still trying to fix your problem, and as far as the water coming off the burn on the backside, I was out there in the middle of the rain, I don't know if you saw me out there, walking on that burn, okay? I did see a minor amount of water, so all, what I'm asking is, next time we have a big rain, let's make a plan that we can go out there, bring your rain suit, and you can show me...
I was, yes.
Okay, okay.
I have video, I videoed the whole thing, where you can see all the little channels that's running through under our property.
Right, well, assume I'm too simple to figure that out, and I need somebody to go out there and show me what it is, so, because otherwise, I don't know what I'm trying to fix, okay? So the detention pond is not done. The detention pond has to be fine-tuned to do what we want it to do, and we don't know exactly what it's not doing that we want it to do until we get some rains. So after the rains we saw, and after we saw that we didn't have a way to full stop the water on the other side, then we've got to get valves, and before I add more water to that side, I've got to get those valves in.
No, I understand that, but what you just explained back to me was that you weren't aware that there's still water running down a ditch on my side of the street before the water crosses the street.
Okay, perhaps I explained, I, I didn't explain it well, but the plan is to put something to catch most of the water, I mean, we can't catch all of the water, some of it's going to run over, but to catch most of the water coming down Browning and divert it into the pond. So, yes, the, what was built isn't doing exactly what we wanted to, but it's a big project, and, you know, and they made their best guess as engineers what was going to happen. So we're not done, so I, perhaps you think that, it's like, oh, detention pond we're done, that's not...
No, but that's not the issue, the issue is, is I'm not willing to wait another two, three, four years before I can enjoy my property when I have over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of damage to my foundation that I have to raise my yard up because of erosion?
Yes, ma'am. The city didn't do any of that, but I'm still trying to fix your problem. So I, I really am trying to help, but, I mean, if you expect me or anyone on this council or anyone in this room to get everything perfect all the time, then...
I'm not, but I've been saying this for four years.
Okay, how long, how long have I been on this job?
How long has everybody else been here that's been on council?
Okay, well, not, many of us is not law, but here's my point, we're still trying to help, I want to fix the problem. Um, so if you want it done faster, I, I'm sorry, not, not faster than the four years, but faster than since the detention pond, already, I've gone out there...
But I just need to make sure that you and everybody else fully understands and is actually comes out there and walks it, and I will show you what I'm talking about.
I've been out there, Adam's been out there.
Yeah, listen, listen.
Every time it rains, the first thing I do when I leave the house...
But you're not on my property, walking in...
But I walk, go all around that pond, everybody's...
Listen, because of previous events, I'm never going to walk up to anybody's house unannounced.
No, that's what I said, come knock on my door, and let's walk it together, ma'am.
I'm not showing up unless you invite me, so if you will invite me, I will go.
Well, I'm inviting you all, come knock on my door.
So on record...
I have a no trespassing sign.
So on record, I can come knock, next time we got to do that.
Absolutely.
All right, well, that's an invitation, and I will take the look on it, but I'm not showing up at somebody's house uninvited. Um, so, I just, I...
No, I just, we want to enjoy our property, and four years is long enough.
I get that, but you also understand city government, I mean, that last rain...
But I also understand that there could have been another solution other than a detention pond. We could have had curbs and ditches put in on our street, and that would have fixed all this and not caused these people problems. But the engineer did what the city asked him to do.
Um, curbs and ditches would have been totally overrun by this water. Um, curbs and ditches aren't going to fix this unless the, unless the curb has a water, a storm drain, and the storm drain was way more money than the detention pond, we just simply can't afford it. Um, so we're trying to do something to help, that we can afford.
Well, I mean, there's grants and stuff for stormwater runoff and all types of things, and I gave those applications to the city years ago.
You're right, and, and I'm going to, over the next year, we are going to try to apply for every grant we can, um, but that was clearly in the...
So this could be a year to fix, or five years?
I think, give you a timeframe, I doubt, seriously, okay, the, the, um, the gates, the valves were more expensive than I thought they were. I thought I could do it to, within the same...
What's the timeline on getting those?
I'm sorry?
What's the timeline on getting those in?
I don't know yet, I just got them today. So, uh, I am going to follow up. Um, but I, the reason I put it on the, on the agenda, for, as old business, is I wanted to make sure y'all knew, because one of the things that this council has been accused of, and perhaps to some degree it's true, is once it goes off the new business, no follow-up is done. So if you will, but again, if anybody's concerned that nothing is followed up on the agenda, if you will ask me, I will put it on the agenda, and then we'll tell you where we're at. I, I mean, I can't promise you that we're going to give a solution, because I didn't know until I walked around on the burn and looked at all this stuff after it was already in, what we need to do next.
Right, but that's, that's the issue, is that... Right, but that's, that's the issue, is that we are trapped. I'm gonna sell my house if I wanted to. I, I can't reroute water to somebody else because then somebody can sue me. So I am at your disposal into what I can do before we can do what we had planned doing four years ago and putting an Ingraham, our, our yard is a foot lower than it was.
And if you have.
And if this was anybody else's yard, I mean, I'm pretty sure they'd be a lot more upset than I am. And I know I've been upset in other meetings, and I have every right to be, as any of you would as well, because I didn't cause this problem.
My, my, um, yard floods every rain. I have the, the gully, the, the.
But does somebody dig a ditch and nobody did anything about it for your yard to flood?
Um, well.
Yes or no? It's a, it's an actual question, did somebody dig a ditch and reroute water to flood your yard?
So, the thing about yes and no questions, the thing about yes and no questions is if, there's more nuance than that. Yes, other houses and developments have gone on around me that has caused more water in my yard. So, yes, it, to, to some degree it has, but has somebody dug a ditch specifically? No. So, but, but if you ask it like that and you make me answer yes or no, there's, then you're just trying to push me into saying something that's not true.
No, I'm not, I'm telling the truth.
Well, but then when I tried to explain to you, you said yes or no, yes or no.
Yes, because I'm, I'm telling you what happened, which everybody here knows. I mean, he knows, he knows. I have pictures, I've showed them, everybody knows. And the city didn't do anything, they didn't punish him for breaking the law, and we're suffering. And I'm just getting told continually, we don't have the money, we can't do this, you have to wait till we do this. And how much longer is okay for me to wait? I'm being sincere, I'm not being sarcastic.
And, and I, Steve, I am too, I am trying to help. Um, so, once we get, once I get approval for the valves and the valves get put in, the next thing we're gonna try is rerouting the rest of the water. If that doesn't work, then we can revisit it again. Uh, is that fair enough?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm literally trying to help, but.
No, I believe you, and I'm not trying to take, this is just my emotions.
Yeah.
So, and I apologize, but, living my situ, our situation for this long, I mean, you would be upset too, I promise you.
Look, my road to my house has been trashed for the entire seventeen years I've lived there. Um, so, we've got lots of ones and not enough money, okay?
I know.
So, I'm working hard, I'm, I'm, we're trying to get the grant that we're gonna fix, um, and I'm gonna cover this, so, I'm gonna cover the roads in staff reports because it's not on the agenda, so I'm not supposed to talk about it. But, um, so, my whole point is, I understand you've been waiting a long time. But I came in, like, right as the detention pond was being built, so I, I really had nothing to do with that, but this is what we've got.
I'm not blaming, I'm not, I'm talking at you, but I'm not blaming you. I'm just asking you to help us fix this as quickly as possible.
Okay, so my only question to you is, do you feel like I am trying to do something?
Time will tell. I, I believe you. No, it's not, I'm taking you at your word right now, but your actions will tell me yes or no. I'm taking you at your word.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't, or otherwise everybody else has to. You're welcome to talk to me after the meeting and get on the.
Well, I tried to get on the agenda, but my email went unheard and it didn't work.
Okay, you can, I have a number on the website. Uh, alright, I have a number, my number is on the website. So text me and ask me, there's no barriers to getting in touch with me directly, okay? So, if you want on the agenda, then we can meet and talk about it. So, fair enough? Okay. Alright, old business, update on valves and fencing at the detention pond. It's just gonna seem like redundant, um, but we do have some bids, but they are much higher than I expected. So, um, is, if I can't find a cheaper way to do it, I can't do it with the same funds we already have approved. So, um, once I figure out if we have to have new funds for it, then I will put it on the agenda. I'm gonna try my level best to figure that out before the next meeting, so that we can get a vote if we need more funds. I obviously can't do it on this one, I just got these, these today. But, we are still trying to fix all of the water problems coming down off of Jennings Mountain. But, this is not a new problem, there's always been flooding in this part of town. So, that, I think with everything else that was talked about, that's all I want to say on the valves and, oh, fencing. We have, um, we approved fencing around the pond to keep out, um, well, to deter trespassers onto the pond because we don't want somebody to fall in and drown. So, we have started on that project, fencing is going up. Is there something else on that? Alright, so, update on property tax exemptions for senior citizens.
Okay, I called, uh, I have to go to the state comptroller and I have to go through the appraisal district. They seem to, what I was told today was to freeze property values and the over sixty-five tax exemption is now the same thing. But I'm gonna call the state comptroller's office tomorrow, this was through the appraisal district. So, uh, we are working on it to see if it's possible to get the property values frozen and the sixty-five, over sixty-five senior discount.
Okay, so we, we have not forgotten about it, we are still working.
There was just a certain timeline I could do it with, so.
Brief pause while we flip the tapes.
And we do have another inquiry.
Okay, so, um, staff reports.
So, so far, uh, we made it through the last cop spell, so that's good, everything got held together. We did have, some of y'all have probably already seen it, Joey Riggles has been having the pump plot a bit over here. We did have a, uh, issue with that lift station, we believe lightning hit it.
The circuit board.
Yeah, the board, the pump company. The biggest issue we're at right now is, uh, we've talked to a couple different pump companies, they're trying to figure out a way to adapt them and pump there. So the pumps that are in there are called Willow's, they're out of Germany. Their lead time is seventeen weeks right now, and they're just shy of twenty thousand each. So, between trying to deal with this through the insurance side and also trying to get some pumps in there that are American made, you know, some of them easier to get a hold of, that's where they're at right now. So, they took pieces of them pumps and they've met, meeting with a couple other pump companies trying to adapt something to fit that guy's system.
Okay, so right now, we're just having to have septic trucks?
Yeah, just pumping it right now, just to keep it off the school and then, so we're, we'll go from there.
Okay, and then, um, I've had, uh, people ask me about the, um, intersection where you had to dig out or jet the intersection at Willow, I'm sorry, not Willow, at, um, Sailors and Moss.
Yes.
So, you still, there's a valve there, so you still need to do work before we can fill that in.
Yes, actually that was part of our briefing tomorrow, that's part of our Wednesday.
Okay, um, any word from, uh, I don't even know the utility, but the utility that broke up our concrete road, put back asphalt, and then couldn't even secure their cap, so it keeps popping out, we gotta make people dodge around it.
So, we're going through with that one right now, we talked with them multiple times, they are, go, from the last I've got, I believe, and don't hold it if I believe they're gonna allow our contractor that we, because they use the same guy. But, this, the other company that had done that, had been doing their own patches. The actual road guy that we use is who I believe they're gonna allow to come back, fix all those patches, put concrete back up there. So I'm just waiting for another pop of that one, so then also I know with the weather right now, that's part of, they're being put off.
But that's gonna be on their guy, right? Okay, and what about the cap that keeps popping out, because, um?
That I don't know, uh, that's something that'll be their job to fix, so that's a gas cap, that's not ours, that's a harvest cap.
I've, I've gone out there and looked at it because it's annoying, um, and there, whatever valve are, is like several feet down. So, um, if I wasn't worried about getting brought up on criminal charges, I would have already got a self-tapping screw and just screwed that thing together. Um, I may do it anyway, and then they can come after me, I guess, because, um, so, a kid's gonna get their foot stuck in there or something, it's, it's dangerous. So, um, would you reiterate to them, not about the asphalt, that can take time, I, I get it, I'm not, they need to put it back like the way they found it. But, I want that cap to be secured, or I'm gonna go out there with a self-tapping screw and, you know, put it on Facebook so they can come after me if they want to, because I'm, I'm tired of it popping out every time somebody hits it with a car.
I'm just not totally sure it's popping out when it's hit by a car.
Yeah, but sometimes.
Those things are pretty heavy. In and out. So I feel like, there's a good chance somebody pulled it out.
Even more reason that we need some, you gotta have tools to get it out, so. And I think the last thing for your department, um, it slipped my mind now, I'm sorry. Oh, the fire hydrant, we're still, uh, is leaking, and we have to shut down city water, is that still on track or?
So, the main bill is, we're gonna try to schedule that with the school's time, it'll be an easy, I say easy fix, it'll, it won't be too bad to fix, but we're gonna kill whole water, might go in more water. So, we don't wanna do that, and, you know, that timeline falling to why the school's going, because for them, bull water notices are quite a bit ahead, so.
So, are we talking spring break is when we're gonna do it?
Yes, I'm gonna do it at that time.
Okay, oh, no, there was one other issue. Um, our pump that is, um, not pumping, it's only pumping at a third what it's supposed to, do we have any resolution or more information on that?
Yeah, so we've, uh, looked into, we got a couple of bids, and so far, the best option is looking like probably gonna have Kirby come out and pull it. He's gonna give me of what he can do to it, um, we've already looked at, he did, he told me the other day, he pulled, uh, levels on everything, the water is there, so everything's totally good, so it really just needs to be reworked.
So it's, is, so we think it's the casing?
No, we think it's actually the pump itself.
Oh, so we think the pump is failing, so it's just not pumping the way, well, okay.
Roughly the worst estimate, yeah, I'm saying the worst estimate is roughly around thirty to thirty-four thousand, that's the worst case scenario. They don't know until they pull it, everything they're gonna do, but that's replacing the pump, the motor, wiring, check valves and all that. We're hoping, hoping it'll be simply lower somewhere, you know.
Okay.
Around at least fifteen or more.
You, you have water, you have, you have money in the water account that it could do something, okay? Alright, I think that is it for you, sorry, I had a bunch of questions for you. Okay, um, Steve? Good? Okay. Um, were you the one that put the asphalt by the intermediate school, or was that the school?
I know everybody picked the pine about the pot open and stuff like that, but when it's raining or freezing, I can't, we can order it. And I found a cap some today, and I did find the intermediate most, and while I got most of the power, it's uh.
The citizens of Sleepy Hollow, is there, is there a plan for that?
I'm hoping next week we can get another one out there.
Okay, so Pine Oak and Sleepy Hollow still need it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and I'm gonna, um.
I know, I have got Pine Oak and I have got the end of Browning Bridge, that's all I want, and I'm gonna do them tomorrow.
It's terrible too, just like Pine Oak.
Okay, and Thunderbird, uh, because, um, so we are trying to get grants for our roads. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sneak this in through staff reports, because we don't have the money. I mean, it's very expensive. I drive the same road as you've shared, it's terrible, I mean, it's, it's bad.
You got three of them, three cars. You have three cars?
Yes, um, so, I, I want it fixed as bad as anybody, but I also don't have the money. So, we're trying to get grants, and that grant, my plan, this would need to be city council approval, but I, I, I have a feeling that it will go through, is to use the grant money to fix the part of Ingram that's between Sailors and, um, where the concrete starts, Bear Circle, um, and Thunderbird, and then, uh, thirty-four twenty-five, which is the road that we have to use to get to our house, because those are the worst. There's, depending on how much money we have, the other end of Ingram, um, out past the water tower, if it gets rough, we need that. And, um, Bowles is basically back to dirt road. Oh, and there's a part of Stewart, so, the thing is, there, the rest of the roads are pretty good, but those are quite bad. So, um, but I, I have not forgotten about it, I mean.
Is there any way we can just go back to dirt roads on there and just ball that up?
Well, the problem with.
I'm not being sarcastic.
Okay, no, okay, valid question. The problem with that is, when it rains, the road could, could become immediately impassable. Because if you have water running down the road, you could have, you could, it could cut gullies in the dirt that would, and, and at least you can get down that road as long as you don't mind looking like a drunk driver going back and forth dodging the falls. So, seriously, I've thought about it, but that, that would be worse, yeah. Uh, but we have not forgotten about that.
Or Pine Oak, is that in our case?
I, I put Pine Oak down, that was, I did, I did not have that as one of the worst ones, but I'll re-drive it, I'll re-drive it.
Charlie, I was, yeah, every day.
Alright, um.
I have bags of concrete in my garage that I bought to fix the black holes in front of my house.
And what is, what, what?
Thunderbird.
Oh, Thunder, yeah, it's, it's bad, um, so.
So, I, uh, I was gonna do it and someone told me city wouldn't be doing it, so I've got bags of concrete sitting there.
Before you said that, how would we prove that you did?
Facebook?
So, now may, now may be done, but, but we'll try, we'll try to get it on, on the, uh, on, we'll try to get Steve to, to put some in there too. Okay, uh, chief, if you could please go over the police report.
Okay, so last month, we had cop service, we had eleven citations, we had eighty-seven crashes, we had three. Incidents, we had two, offenses, we had three, and warrant service was three.
Okay. Thank you, chief. And, uh, when is, uh, our incoming chief gonna be with us?
Be here in two weeks.
Two, two weeks, okay. Thank you. Alright, um.
City wants cleanup, it's March eighth and ninth. We got to be back here again, um, just remember no mattresses, no refrigerators, no batteries, everything like that.
Everybody who brings something will get a small seed packet to make Brownsville beautiful.
So, yeah, so keep Brownsville beautiful, it's gonna give, um, everyone seed packets until they run out, to keep Brownsville beautiful if you bring trash to the cleanup.
Eighth and ninth.
Alright, so are there any announcements? Well, that's fine, as long as the council is here. Alright, well, I only have one other item on the agenda. Okay, another person to adjourn, I hear a second, alright, Jason Segley.